Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this February 28th, 2023 meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is about 3:02 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell.
Excused.
Thank you. Councilmember Krueger.
Here.
Councilmember Dinson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
There are six members present, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have six members present and a quorum. Our moment of silence today is dedicated to the life of small business owner and Tacoma and South Sound booster Pat Nagel. Pat recently unexpectedly passed away. He played an instrumental role in the revival of downtown Tacoma with the Harmon Brewery and Restaurant, The Hub in Tacoma, and Gig Harbor, and many other small business initiatives that made Pierce County more vibrant. Our hearts are certainly with his friends and family. I'll ask Councilmember Morell to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then stand for a moment of silence.
Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four is approval of our agenda. Is there any objection to approving the agenda as published? Not seeing any. The agenda will stand approved. That brings us to Section five, our consent agenda, and I'll turn to Councilmember Morell for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move approval of the consent agenda moving under Section C, item one, to Section seven.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda, except for moving item C1 to Section seven of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember, excuse me, I've got my mic on, sorry. Councilmember Krueger, how have you? Councilmember Dinson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Hinton.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
A resorted vote of six ayes and zero nays.
A vote of six to zero. The consent agenda is adopted. Item number six, messages from the executive, judges, and the prosecuting attorney. We have one, the message, a message from the executive transmitting the following ordinance, which was approved and signed on February 23rd, 2023. The executive did sign ordinance number 2022-84, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council granting a non-exclusive franchise to Northwest Pipeline LLC for the location of petroleum product pipelines on certain county rights of way. That brings us to item number seven, proclamations, awards, and/or appointments to boards and commissions. Let's, let's move to proposal number 2023-17 first. Councilmember Herrera for a motion.
I move proposal number R202317 for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt proposal number R2023-17. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record?
Proposal number R202217, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming March 9, 2023 as Billy Frank Jr. Day in Pierce County, Washington. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera to read the proclamation into the record.
Thank you, Chair. A resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming March 9th, 2023 as Billy Frank Jr. Day in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas Billy Frank Jr., a warrior and nationally known statesman, committed his entire life to protecting the ancestral lands of his Nisqually Pub's people's traditional way of life and the endangered salmon, whose survival is the focus of tribal life. And whereas he is remembered for his activism, playing a critical role in the fish wars of the 1960s and 70s, including helping establish the survival of the American Indian Association, which was one of the driving forces behind the first fish-ins protest of 1963 held at Frank's Landing. And whereas these fish-ins became common protest, will tribal fishermen and others return to Frank's Landing and fish offer reservation allowing themselves to be arrested to bring attention to their cause and the public awareness raised by these fish-ins. Due to the activism of Billy Frank Jr. and other activists eventually led to the instrumental 1974 bolt decision affirming tribal fishing rights. And whereas following this decision, Billy Frank Jr.'s focus became salmon habitat restoration, educating the public in his battle cry, which was tell your story, and protection for the precious land and water to bring back wild fish populations. And whereas his legacy also included his service to the Northwest Indian Commission, where he served as chair for almost, for the first 30 years. And he was also posthumously awarded the President Medal of Freedom, awarded by President Barack Obama. He was a true hero. And whereas Billy Frank Jr.'s legacy lives on through his son, Willie Frank III, who continues to work collaboratively for healthy salmon habitats and natural environments within Washington. And whereas Pierce County Council recognized Billy Frank Jr.'s legacy and life service as a guiding light for the cross-cultural connections, bipartisanship, leadership through collaboration, consultation, and bridge building to ensure protection of natural environment for salmon and more. And whereas we encourage the community to celebrate and learn more about the Puget Sound's rich tribal history. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that we celebrate Thursday, March 9th, 2023, Billy Frank Jr. Birthday as Billy Frank Jr. Day in Pierce County, Washington, adopted this 28th day of February, 2023. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. With us today, we have invited guests Dale Varbal and Nancy Shippantower. We would invite either or both of you to the podium for some brief remarks.
Good afternoon. It's always an honor when our people get recognized because for so many years, people have tried to push us off. They have tried to, we don't want to know who the tribes are. We don't want to talk about these treaties. But the treaties, I mean, when they tried to get rid of our treaties, we kind of thought like, so what are they going to do with the treaties they made with countries all over the world? Will they be nonexistent then if they get rid of our treaties? We made that with the goodness of our hearts, of our hearts. And it's really sad that these schools do not educate our people, educate people on who we are. Like, we've been here from time immemorial, and we'll be here forever. We're not going nowhere. I mean, you see that we have been able to grow. Our people lived in poverty when they did those fishing rights. When the men went to jail, the women had nothing. They had children. They had no food. They had no, there was no welfare or no free food around. We were just lucky that there were some people who did come through and brought donations down so those women could feed their children. When my dad and uncles went to jail, I was eight years old. Went to jail right here. I remember coming here and seeing my dad in jail, and I cried because I couldn't touch him, and I cried. I didn't understand why he was locked up. When they asked them, why are you guys in jail? Because they all came in at the same time. They said, for fishing, and they all laughed at him. He goes, it's a true story. We're here for fishing. Can you imagine throwing people in for doing a way of life that we've been done doing forever? Just think about what you've done today. It's an honor that you've done that for us, that you recognize the indigenous people here. But it's also important that you educate these schools, these young people, on who we are, even yourself. You know, we've been here, so we're not going nowhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Having the history and being young, I do exercise my treaty rights still to this day on behalf of things that have happened to her family and what Billy has also brought to offer. I work for the Palaup Tribe Fisheries Department in our fish restoration projects and habitat If it wasn't for Billy, we wouldn't be able to have what we have today and being able to have the staffing, the money, and, you know, and things that come together and every, all the collaboration that we get to work with, all these outside agencies with the South Puget Sound Salmon Enhancement Group. We work with, you know, WDFW a lot. I run a sample boat out here in the bay for, you know, with WDFW and, you know, and sample fish. But if it wasn't for things and me being able to hear the stories and protecting our resource for our present past fishermen and having fish for our future generations is more important to me than, you know, and hearing the stories and everything that goes on, I really appreciate everything you guys have done. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up first in chambers to anyone wishing to provide comments on this proclamation. Please come to the podium, say your name for the record, and we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Colleen Sodomish, and I'm Senior Counsel for Tribal Relations. I've been working for Pierce County since 2018, and I'm a member of the Konaalte Nation. I'm a descendant of one of the five traditional leadership families at Konaalte, and I'm proud to say that I am their first tribal member attorney. I graduated from law school in 1979, and believe it or not, my first job was with the Northwest Indian Fish Commission, where Billy was chairman of the commission. And so I got to meet Billy, and I got to spend a lot of time with him. We went to meetings, and he gave presentations, and, and we just came, became really close friends, and he mentored my kids, which I'm so grateful for. And I just had to come here in person. I normally work from home. It's nice to see everybody's face. I'm kind of giddy in a way because, you know, I have two cats, and that's who I talk to mostly, if I'm not on Zoom, right? But, you know, Billy was an amazing tribal leader. He was my hero. He's an icon. He's going to leave a legacy that will always be remembered. And I personally, and it's just my personal opinion, I think he's one of the greatest tribal leaders in the last century, and I hope we will always remember, and I appreciate this council for remembering him, and I appreciate who brought this forward. Because I don't think, say, you know, six or seven years ago, I don't believe there were very many, if any, resolutions coming out of Pierce County that were tribal-related. But I'm seeing a lot more, and we're generating a lot more, and I just think it's a really good thing. And I just wanted to say to Nancy that we have put together an amazing tribal training program. We've had six sessions since COVID. We've trained 274 Pierce County employees, starting with some of the members here at council and moving down, department heads, executive teams. We have already scheduled six more this year, and four of them are for the prosecutor attorney's office. The prosecutor, the elected prosecutor, went through the training and decided that for 2023-24, it was, she was going to mandate that all her staff go through this training. And it's a one-day training, and it's amazing. And so we were just moving. I can, I can see it, you know, I can see it in your faces, that, you know, what about tribes? How does this affect tribes? How does this impact tribes? And I think, you know, one of my, I guess, you'll remember me for the training and for being out there. It's very difficult sometimes to work for Pierce County when there are maybe one or two other tribal members that work for Pierce County. We need more diversity. We need more tribal members here. But I, but I do appreciate the opportunity to work for Pierce County. It's a privilege and an honor, and he was amazing. He was great, and I'm glad, and it was a great resolution. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodomish. Thank you for being here on behalf of Executive Dan Meyer and in deference to your representation of the executive and our guests. We, I did not keep, keep time, so thank you for those words and your presence. We're glad you're here with us in person and not your cats today for this special day as well. Anyone else in chambers?
I just want to say one more thing. You took one of our best officers, you know. Paul knows everything about the water, everything, and the mountains, but he's here now. I seen him, and I said, why are you like dipping in a soup? Because I always seen him in his uniform. But you got a good worker there, and he, he represents us really good, too.
Thank you. We're grateful to have him. Thank you for sharing him with us. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment? Seeing none, Ms. Persons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment? And first, we have Erica.
Good afternoon, Chair and Counsel. This is Erica Snell. While I am attending this for other business, I saw an opportunity to recognize this resolution, and I wanted to make a comment to the young lady who expressed that there's not a lot of teaching going on with the native culture, and I thought it would be a great opportunity for me to state that as an educator in Pierce County and a person that owns preschools, we do ourselves have a, something called 52 Weeks of Learning, where we do teach native culture by state, and it is posted on our website, atccenter.org. So if you want to take note of that, you can see kind of what we're doing in the community to keep native culture alive in our 52 Weeks of Learning. We're in each state, recognizing the 50 states plus the two outside regions. We go right from the beginning, Alabama, Alaska, Arizona, and all the native tribe culture is specified there, and we do have a great program. And I've reached out to your council specifically to help with childcare resources and creating a structure to keep the native culture alive. So I'm hoping, I'm usually down there on other business, but I, and I'm kicking myself for not being down there today, but I think that if you take my information, atccenter.org, and reach out to me, I'd love to share our curriculum program and exposure to keep native culture in education. It's, it's, it's very important and a big piece of history and learning. So I'm recognizing Billy here as well in this resolution, and I just appreciate you and wanted to make that public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands online, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Final comments and final comments by council members. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I thought it was important to bring this proclamation forward just for the same reasons that we did one a few months ago for the Dr. Martin Luther King. You know, America needs its heroes. Like I said before with Dr. Martin Luther King, we would have forgot about the works that he did if we didn't continue to talk about it. So talking about what Billy did in the, in the past during the fishing wars, after the fishing wars, and up to modern times here, and, and his spirit moving out in others who are doing the co-management with the state of Washington, with the counties, to make the environment better for our salmon, which helps everybody here. Billy, it's really important to talk about it. You know, I've had, I've had conversations with tribal members in the middle of the night, exercising their treaty rights out on the water. And some of those conversations go to talking about their grandparents, just like Nancy was talking about her parents and what they went through. I've seen pictures of you, Nancy, as a kid, crying on the banks of the, as they're dragging your family away. Those are real things, and that is every reason to be totally bitter. Billy could have been bitter this whole time, and nothing would have got done, and the tribe would be over here, and the governments would be over here, and we'd still just not understand each other. But I've seen the progress that has done, and it took a person who kind of came in the room, calmed everybody down, let you tell your story, let you tell your story, let's come together. And that's what it's all about. He represents just not himself, but many peoples, the struggles that we went through and where we're going. So I thought it was important to continue to talk about this, and that's how we remember. America needs its heroes. Pierce County needs its heroes, and we're talking about it today, so I hope we pass this. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Councilmember Krueger.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wanted to make a note, you know, life is short, and we do a lot of resolutions here, and there are some times when they're special, and we have someone here that we are honoring very, in a special way. And I say that because I hear stories, and I, it makes you wish you had, could go back and sit at the campfire with him and listen to the stories that he has to tell. And having said that, this is just the opportunity for us to be grateful for the stories that he has and that we can learn from that, and, you know, that has a chance to bring people together. And I know there was something else I was going to mention, but I believe he has a statue now? Is it in DC?
It's not, it's not completed yet, but when it does get completed, it's going to DC.
Yes. It just, I just wish I had had the opportunity to meet him and hear the stories. He has a lot to say. So thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing, not seeing any other hands, I want to thank our guests for being here, helping us honor and remember Billy Frank Jr. Day. Thank you, Councilmember Herrera, for making sure that we prioritized this today. As previous speakers have said, Billy Frank Jr. really is an icon and a hero, not only to Indian country, certainly to Indian country, but to all of us, we're very proud of him here in Washington State, but throughout the country. As is noted, every state gets to have two statues of folks who are incredibly significant to that state in Statutory Hall in the United States Capitol. And that's what Councilmember Krueger was alluding to. And Billy Frank Jr. is, soon will be, they're one of the two statues representing Washington State in Statutory Hall, and we're very, very proud of that. And as, as was mentioned by Councilmember Herrera, you know, it's really important that, yes, we say these words and we acknowledge our heroes like Billy Frank Jr. It's equally important that we put action behind those words, and I'm proud that this council and this county does continue to do that, to respect those treaty rights, to do our part and then some to restore salmon runs and help restore this environment that so many people gave their life for. So the work is really important, and the work will not be forgotten, and we'll continue to do this work in the, in the memory and name of Billy Frank Jr. So with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Dinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hinton.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello, excuse me.
Aye.
Thank you. A resorted vote of six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six to zero, the resolution is adopted. Please help me with a round of applause. So we'll invite our guests here for a brief photo, if we could. If we could invite you on the dais here, we have a proclamation to give to you, and we'd like to capture the moment with a, with a photo, if we could. Come on up.
Is there a way to get silly?
Watch your step. Nancy, good to see you. I'd invite you to open it up. It takes a little bit of a better photo.
Wow, that is nice.
All right, take a couple photos. One, two, three. You've got one more. One, two, three. Perfect.
I didn't have to give this anywhere, do I?
No, it's yours.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I get to keep this as a counsel?
Yes.
Thank you for that. We're going to come back to proposal number 2023-16, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Krueger, the sponsor, for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move R2023-16.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt proposal number R2023-16. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Proposal number R2023-16, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of one new member, Jose Maldonado, and reappointment of two existing members, Lori Beck and Michael Mann, to the Pierce County Tourism Promotion Area Hotel Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to invite our appointees that are up for confirmation today to say a few words, briefly introduce yourself, free to share why you want to serve or anything else. We'll start with Mr. Maldonado, who's in chambers today, and then we'll move to our guests on Zoom. Mr. Maldonado, thank you for being with us.
Good afternoon, Chair Mello, council members. Thank you so much for having me today. My name is Jose Maldonado. I am the general manager at the Holiday Express Tacoma Downtown Hotel. I have been hospitality for about 15 years, right, basically right out of high school. So I really enjoy the business of hospitality, and I look forward to driving tourism here in Pierce County. So thank you.
Thank you. We have Ms. Lori Beck online. Ms. Beck, thank you for your willingness to re-up and be considered for reappointment. We invite you to introduce yourself and say a few words.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon, Chair Mello and council members. My name's Lori Beck, and I just would like to thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve the TPA Commission. I have been heavily involved in the hotel tourism industry for, for many years, and I look forward to continuing to serve our industry and, and how important our industry is to the economy and our community. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your continued service. Mr. Michael Mann, thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself and say a few words.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Mello. My name is Michael Mann. I'm the general manager at the Silver Cloud Inn Tacoma Waterfront. It's been my pleasure to serve the people of Pierce County as a member of the TPA Commission for the past three years. As a commission chair, as I feel it's our responsibility to ensure we're good stewards of the funds collected by the hotels within the interlocal agreement and to ensure that we invest in marketing efforts that provide a positive rate of return, not only for the lodging establishments, but also provide a positive impact for the overall health of the Pierce County economy. of the Pierce County economy. If my reappointment to the commission is confirmed, it's my goal to continue to explore new ways to increase funding to the TPA beneficiaries so they may expand their efforts attracting visitors and tourists to experience all that Pierce County has to offer, mountain to sea. Thank you, Chair Mello and council members, for this opportunity to present.
Thank you for being with us. And to all three of you, are there any questions or comments before we open this up for a public hearing? Not seeing any. I don't think there's anyone else in chambers wishing to provide testimony on this proposal. So Ms. Persons, anyone online to provide feedback on this proposal only?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands raised.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Any final questions or comments by council members? Councilmember Krueger.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you for, so much for stepping up to be on this commission. Jose, I welcome you coming there. I got to meet you last week or the week before. And Lori and Michael, this is a committee where we get to see the best of everybody because it's fun, and you're doing great things with the dollars that you have and bringing more folks here. So I really appreciate your enthusiasm that you bring there and the knowledge that you have to share. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Krueger, and thanks for being our liaison to this important commission. This is important work to bring business and visitors from outside of the community to spend money here and to enjoy the many businesses and cultural and natural resources we have, great places to visit, spend money, and enjoy time here. So thank you for helping us grow our economy and make this a really special place to do business and, and enjoy. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chair and Counsel.
Aye.
Can you guys hear me?
I think so.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Dinson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
A vote of six to zero, the resolution is adopted. Thank you again for your service to Pierce County. There are no ordinances for consideration today, and there are no further resolutions for consideration today. So that brings us to other business and announcements. I'll turn to council members first. Are there any council members with any further business or announcements? Not seeing any. Ms. Long?
Not from staff. Thank you.
That brings us to item number 11, the Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is a time to hear from community members about items that were not on our action agenda. We would ask you to raise your hand in Zoom. You'll have up to three minutes to make your comments. We ask you to keep them focused, respectful, and on topic, and we'll go to Zoom. So Ms. Persons.
For any member of the public wishing to participate in Citizens Forum, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And first, we have Erica.
Hello, Chair and Counsel. This is Erica Snell with Around the Clock Childcare Center. I've been frequenting your meetings in person over the last few weeks. I did not have the ability to make it in person today. However, I am going to be asking the council for a sponsorship to Resolution 2096 S2. From what I understand from Mike Kruger, each one of you has the ability to adjust the boundary lines on parcel 775000130, where my zoning was proposed, community employment, allowing me to operate my childcare facility at its full function and ability for maximum exposure to the community in the desert care child zone area in District 5. This was brought to Marty Campbell's office back in '21, when, two weeks after the voting had happened, and Mike Kruger was also aware of it. And then, four months later, I did get a suggestion from Mike Kruger that the amendment period had ended. So the missed, the opportunity on my end was there. I'm having quite a hard time navigating planning and public works with this zoning, with a bunch of inconsistencies that I will spare your ears on. However, I, I just want to point to council that this has cost my company thousands and thousands of dollars, but more so, it's been a lost opportunity to help working families in the area. And if you can come together and adjust what was proposed so that we can obtain our occupancy and provide full-time care, we would very much appreciate it. And as always, my service to you and each one of your districts and how we can help fix comprehensive community plans to allow businesses in childcare like myself develop and be sustainable is my end goal. We are at end of session on March 8th for legislation to propose a bill, and I am working with a team aggressively. I'm just afraid that this isn't going to get recognized with the deadline approaching so closely and that we're going to have to wait an entire year at the state level. I just want each one of you to know that we, in Pierce County, with my, my data and your authority, can at least adjust, well, most specifically, my boundary line from Resolution 202096 S2. But more importantly, we have an opportunity to get your district out of those desert zones for childcare by fixing these comprehensive plans. I appreciate your time, and I hope to hear from one of you guys soon.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, we'll close the portion of Citizens Forum today. And seeing no other business before the council, we will stand adjourned. Have a good day.